Time being is 6:30, I call the Halifax Planet Board into session. On the agenda, we have a public hearing, special permit for 925 Plymouth Street, sign at RG Automotive at 6:45. We have a continuance of a public hearing for site plan review for a special permit number 19-3 at 3:30 Plymouth Street, O'Reilly's.
That's a site plan review, not special permit.
Sorry, site plan review. Public hearing for site plan review. And 7 o'clock, we have Form A Brookside Realty Franklin Street, map 104 lots 5 and 9. We have minutes and bills along with a building permit for River Street and then discussion on Autumn Lane, Dunkin' Donuts. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read? Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two public hearings tonight. So the way the public hearings work, you, we come through the chairman, any questions, we get answers for you, and then go over from there. Couple of minutes before we start that. What if we go over to the next one? Let's look at Halifax. See if you can also take a look at two. Okay, time being 6:35, have a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to suspend a regular scheduled planning board meeting and open a public hearing for special permit number nine, special permit for 925 Plymouth Street.
Yes, we do.
Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 4th, 2019 at 6:35 PM in Meeting Room 1, Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Richard Green to seek a special permit to allow for a wall sign to be four feet in height and 26 feet in length on the commercial building located at 925 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, CR 2338.
Was put in after the fact?
I just don't see what the pipe caught, like when you did it, if you know what I'm saying. Like you guys built this.
It was open air at the end.
But if everything just. But if everything was flying past it, what made it go into the pipe?
There was a drain adjustment, so we had to keep it open.
And the bank built seven feet on top of it, so that's why they just stick a pipe in it.
Said property is owned by Richard Green, trustee, 925 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, CR 2338, as shown on assesses map number 58 lot 1A. The applicant seeks a special permit in for a sign larger than those allowed by right in accordance with 167-13CD of the zoning bylaws of the County Halifax under section 167-13, exterior signs. Subsection, wall sign, 167-13E, 14B, area is zoned industrial, petition number 891.
Have a motion to open the public hearing, second?
Aye, second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Whatever you have in front of you is what I wanted to do. That's what's there, the wall is to make it larger. People get confused of which door to. So I need to move it this way anyway.
Paint it nice and bright or something?
No.
So your overall sign looks like it's below the total square footage that you'd be allowed. It's just that it's taller than what's normally that, so that's really the only difference.
Do you know how far it is setback from the road?
Hundred and one.
Get that one extra foot.
Yeah.
Okay. Did he put this together for you, or you did it all?
Uh, no, the only reason why I said we followed it together.
Yeah.
It's good, I think it's well put together and it helps us understand what you're trying to do.
Even though it exceeds what we could give him when he came in the first time, in the area, the industrial, how far off the road he is, considering it's 106 to be able to get visibility in a high-speed area, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, if the total area was bigger than you'd be allowed, then that might be another thing, but I think it fits. It's just taller than what the zoning allows, so it's shorter and taller. I don't have a problem with it.
I think for what he's asking, I don't think it's unreasonable or.
Did we get any input from any, anybody else?
Do you like this sign at night at all?
On the building, we rent a thing from Edison with a telephone pole that shines on the front of the property.
So all the way from the street, it's just shining back on the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even less impact, because probably be able to see it with a light glow, but it's not. Even though it's a larger sign, it's not going to be a distraction.
So all that went out to the other boards?
Yeah, notices go out to everybody.
And they have 30 days?
Yeah, well, it's different than.
For the site plan, it's not.
On site plan, and I don't know if they have to put feedback or anything like that. This is really your, cleaning board's duty.
Okay, but they've had that for a little while. Okay.
My only thing is, I'm not sure if we actually need four members on this, but you need two-thirds vote. So I think we'll go through the motions, you guys can vote on it. If there's any issues, I'll find out from Charlie. And if we have to redo it and get a fourth one here, then we may have to.
Whatever.
Do that, sorry. That's Mass General, Chapter 48, you have to look into it.
Sash, like all those numbers. On the site plan?
On special permits.
Okay. Any motions or any comments from the audience?
Seems fairly straightforward to me. I guess my only question is, can we act on it until we figure out whether or not we need all four people to vote, or what's the best approach here?
Do you have a copy of the book yet?
Do.
Camera just fell off. Thank you.
Sometimes it's your book.
I'm not sure.
Not this one.
If it's actually in there, or if it's the state regulations that we have to adhere to, which is Chapter 48.
I think this. Can we at least say who the governing authority would be, right? It might get into the percentage vote.
We have to hold the hearing within 65 days of filing, and we have 90 days after the public hearing. It's hoping to make a decision. That's from my notes, but it says at least four members, so I must have looked into that at some point.
How many members does your board have?
We do have five.
Technically five.
So two-thirds of five be three?
Yeah, so. So that would mark, but that all depends on how the.
I'm just not sure if.
It'd be north of three, be 3.3, so if you round it up, right?
So that would apply for, yeah. I'll try and Google it real quick. Ah, here it is, right there, first thing I need to do it.
This is us, special permit, special permit presence, sorry to show, for a two-thirds vote of boards with more than five members. You guys are not more than five.
Oh, there's still me too.
A vote, a vote of at least four members of a five-member board and a unanimous vote of a three-member board.
That's pretty clear.
Yeah. So we need four members, yeah?
I thought it said we need, I just wanted about three members.
Yeah, if it's a three-member board.
We just happen to not have two of them here.
Four-member board, which we are at least a four-member board, in a unanimous vote of a three-member board.
So what do you guys want to do?
We have to continue it, right?
Right, to the next meeting to see if we can get.
Well, the.
Um, I don't think the time's gonna run out, because we're just starting the public hearing.
Okay.
So it would be the 18th?
Yep.
Would be the next time, April 18th?
Make sure that we can get everybody here. That's April vacation too, just for information.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, Halifax Planning Board.
Okay.
It's on the schedule.
I'll give Jonathan a call, see if he.
See if he can make sure, I can send him an email as well saying we absolutely need you here for the next meeting at all costs, but even if he runs late and we maybe put you on last or something like that.
Sure, well, I don't know, whatever you need.
Well, we come in early.
He's like, yeah, whatever.
You don't even need to be here necessarily, but.
How easy this guy is, he's just like, sure, whatever. All right, so motion to continue?
So before we do that, so everything works fine here?
Yeah, I don't have any problems with it.
Okay.
So April 18th, and you'll have minimal time?
I'm trying to do a time now.
Yeah, we need to set a time for it. Why don't we do 6:35?
To put it first on the, on the list?
Yeah, because that way if Jonathan's here, we can just take care of it and be done.
Excellent. Thank you for your time, guys.
Okay, thank you.
So motion to continue and then motion to.
To close and.
Back close. Thank you, Rex. Sorry about that.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on April 18th at 6:35 PM.
Okay, have a motion, is a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to reopen the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now can I have a motion to open the other public hearing?
Have them? Okay, do I need to leave the others? Okay, excellent. I make a motion to open the public hearing for the site plan review, 19 SPR 03, 3:30 Plymouth Street, for O'Reilly's.
Continuation.
For continuation.
Have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're running late.
Wait.
Sure, just roll it around.
Good evening.
Evening.
For the record, my name is Casey Birch again. I'm an engineer, solely engineering, and I'm here for the continuance of 3:30 Plymouth Street to propose O'Reilly's. Just to recap from last time, we modified, the biggest change we did, we modified the detention basin, as explained last time, to provide for the recharge volume and to provide infiltration and exfiltration. And we also provided the leak-off in the driveway, which does two things. It satisfies the highway's concerns about runoff going from our driveway, and it also, if it ever occurred that the road floods, this leak-off is only two to three inches higher than the grade in the road right there. So if it were to flood three inches, it would come off the leak-off and it would go through this shallow swell that I've designed here and come around the property. Now, some modifications that we made with this pipe is we raised it up again and to be close to the crown of the road, close to the crown of the pipe within the road here. And this pipe does travel down this way and apparently goes to the river by the fire department, is that where? No. Wherever the outlet is. So I guess in higher flows and bigger storm events, they were using this as an overflow, as mentioned before. Unfortunately, it's at the same elevation as the main, so it was more of a diversion, I would say, like a split, like a D-box, a distribution box for septic, it's kind of acted the same way. So we proposed to outlet here and go at half a percent to get it up a little higher, almost to the crown of this road. So it would only come into this drain pipe during high-storm events. And if that was a problem, we have the safety leak-off here, if it ever reached to the top of the road. We made this, I presented this to wetlands last week, and Steve from the highway department was here in the room, and he was fine with the design as is, so. Now, I agree, we would need, we would need an easement, or we could take the pipe out. I mean, I, like I said, my client has no problem installing that, has no problem not installing a pipe for the added cost that it is. I, this plan was trying to like, help everybody. I know that, I know that neighbors probably don't want to see any runoff go there, but again, it'll be during higher storm events. So yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell, trying to, trying to please everybody.
So the way you've got it set up now, at the end of that pipe, it's gonna go into the detention basin?
Not this pipe, no. It'll bypass everything, like it would do if our project wasn't here. Because right now it just bombs and leaks into the ground. So this would divert it and put it closer to the swatland area, which also is in the same vicinity as this drainage swell that when we were out in site, you obviously noticed. I don't know if it was man-made, but it's definitely there, and I'm pretty sure that this site is draining to that area as well.
Also, I think you did say, but you're raising the invert at the street for that pipe, correct? So you're going to.
So, so we're tying into a manhole, but there's a, there's a pipe that goes into the site. We can't do work in the right-of-way, so we're tying right into the man, to the pipe that's there now.
Yep.
So what it'll do is it'll fill up, and it'll hit this, but it'll come back, like, it'll come back and it'll raise up to the elevation that we have it in this manhole, and that's the overflow that we're doing.
And you've currently set the invert of the pipe that goes through the property to be at the crown of the incoming pipe?
It's close to the crown, yes. It's, I think it's like, two inches below it, but it could be higher too. Like, we have enough room to do however, like, however, um, slope we want it to in that.
Okay. So you, what you're proposing is to put a manhole on the corner of the property?
Correct, yep. Tying into wherever the.
Pipe comes.
Pipe comes into it, yeah. So yeah, it'll, it'll go into, like, some water will go into the.
I just want to make sure that.
It'll definitely divert.
That I'm clear on it. So right now, you, the invert leaving that pipe is the same as the main line going down the road?
No, it's higher, it's higher.
It is already, okay.
Oh, no, 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 currently it's the same. Currently, they, it's the same.
All right.
I.
There's a mess.
My proposed is higher.
All right, that's what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Okay, so in my assessment on this, the chance of water going in there is now less likely.
Less likely.
You need more water at the road for it to even go in there.
Correct.
In my mind, that's making that situation better.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that.
Do you have a copy of the existing condition plan again, just to take a look at what is happening in that street? Just to confirm that.
Yeah, sure.
Does go to the west there? Because I, I don't know if we'd be open to, but I think maybe a condition of approval might include just better understanding what's happening out there in the right-of-way, so if you already have some survey, it might be beneficial to everybody, just to maybe get a couple more manholes down the street, just to confirm what actually is going on there.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely run it by my client, but it does mean added cost for sure.
Yep.
It just seems to me that you were able to provide the extra in case the volume at the road was higher, but you actually lessened the chance that water would impact neighbors, is that correct?
Correct. 6707, 6793, so it's definitely flowing that way.
And this manhole's padded over, so you could verify what's going on there, right?
Right, right. But the line here is 67.82, and so I'm assuming in between here and here is probably around 67.8, 85-ish, or eight, lower 80.
That's a scary thing to do.
Then it jumps across the street to this side of the road.
And then it goes into a 14-inch main, which is bigger than the 12, which makes sense. You want, you want your downstream pipes to be larger to take additional flow.
Which way is that going?
That way.
That's going towards.
A fire station.
Fire station.
Yeah.
And that's 14-inch?
Yeah. The, the pipe in front of us is a 12-inch, but yes, the.
So we don't know for certain that this is at the same elevation as the other pipe right now, right? Because you couldn't open that manhole.
No, all I know is, well, I don't, but I'm still, my proposed pipe is still gonna be higher than 67, the crown of 67.82.
Yeah, we just don't know that it's at the same elevation as the existing pipe.
I don't.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, all I know is that they, the highway department did tell me that they use it because it does flow into that as well, so if, during a high-storm event, is that the only time it flows in there? I don't, I don't think so. I think they use it all the time as a, as a flow, but, but yes, we're trying to be higher than it.
A flow into the catch basin?
Into our, our property, so, right. So they closed it off originally, is what, this is a story that I was told by the highway department. They closed it off and then it caused problems in the road. So they busted it open, and I mean, I guess you guys still have issues in that road, but it's not as bad. So what I'm trying to do is give you two options, give you two other measures to help your current condition and hopefully not add any water from.
Which is the leak, the leak-off and.
And raising it above the.
Right.
So that new manhole, what's the range of the manhole it's gonna be on the site there then?
Um, I think that we have it at 72.
So that would be.
About the same as the road.
Catch basin out in the street, so.
Right.
Yeah, if anything, it'll flood out in the street a little bit, and then it'll come here.
It'll flow down, right.
And you have enough space to actually have it, to find swell along the distance to keep it on your property?
It's gonna be, it's running along the property, yeah. But again, it's, it's a small area in case, but if it ever does, you know, in a worst-case scenario.
And they would consider giving an easement for that?
Yes, my, the owner, my client who's wanting to purchase property, definitely, definitely would. I think you need to, you know, I don't, I think that should be a condition of approval, for sure.
Did you look into the infiltration question that we had last time about the appropriate rate to use in the basin in the back there?
Yeah, I actually, I actually looked at it pretty extensively. So we use the hydraulic soil group B because that's what the national survey of that area said it was. So that doesn't change our recharge volume. We're still, I'm using the recharge factor rate of a B soil. So that's six sixty-five. Now, the infiltration rate, I used point five two originally, but then I went to, I tried the minimum of point one seven from what the manual said. And we are thirty-three hours instead of the eleven hours, which is still under the seventy-two hour threshold that the stormwater manual allows for, for an infiltration basin.
Did you also take a look at the hydrocat to see if it impacted the hydrocat by lowering that infiltration rate?
Yes. I did it for the impervious area and I cut, and I truncated the, there's all these steps in for, so what we did originally was the static method.
Yep.
And I did the, let me, I got my notes here.
Yeah, except I think the hydrocat actually had that point five two value and exfiltration built into the program.
Right. So we did it with, we did the dynamic method. And we just took the impervious area that went to the basin and it was able, the volume that I had at the sixty-two five, it was like, it came out to point oh eight acres per feet, which was a lot less than the point one five that was required acre foot.
Yep.
So that worked that way. And then I went a step further and I contacted my, the TerraCon, the people who did the forings out there and stuff. I asked them what they, how they got the hydraulic conductivity. And they said, yeah, they did it in the lower stratus in the saturated soils. And I was like, okay. So I ran those numbers with that infiltration rate for the recharge and that came out to seventy-one hours. So we were still even under that. And that's with taking half of the, because you have to do times up by point five.
Yep.
So we were down, we had infiltration rate of point oh seven inches per hour and it still was under the seventy-one. It was still seventy-one. So it was like under the seventy-two threshold, so.
But I guess just in a test in the hydrocat, because the hydrocat had it built in that it was infiltrating at the point five two as the storms were coming in.
Yeah.
Did you test that one at all, just to see if the peak rates changed or the elevation in the basin changed at all?
I did not run that, but the, I don't think that, it won't affect the recharge volume because that's always gonna be stacked.
Yeah, yeah, the number is the same. I'm just wondering if it-
If the peak flow is high.
If it impacted because it's not gonna infiltrate as fast as it would have-
Right. I can definitely take a look at that for sure. That's just a quick change in the program of the numbers and hit you on, see what the, I mean, our peak flows I believe are pretty significantly lower already, so.
But yeah, just to make sure that the height doesn't change and you don't have to build it up an extra few inches to still contain it. On border health, they made a comment on here just that nothing's been submitted yet for septic, but that we should take note of the grading on the site?
We have submitted, we submitted this ethic. We actually got comments back and we're working on it now. We got them, yes, through Wednesday.
Okay.
And they had a hearing last night that they were just gonna open it up. And so I didn't have to go to that one, but I'm gonna be going in front of them, I think, April seventeenth.
Okay. Do you mind sharing what the context of the comments were? Did they-
Honestly, I had not, I didn't really review them yet. I just had my assistant type them up. So we're diving into them today, tomorrow mostly.
Okay.
But I mean, I like perused like the first few pages and most of them was like buoyancy calcs for septic tank, I think. But that was like the biggest fitting that I saw. I don't know the grading comment, what it was, but I didn't notice that one.
Are you asking for a couple waivers from the Title V requirements at all?
Yes. I believe that they require five foot separation and we're doing a four foot separation from the seasonal high groundwater. And which, I mean, I guess they do it all the time. I'll find out if they actually allow me to do it. But and then we are also, the other waiver is the flow, the septic flow. We're using meter readings and you need to ask for a variance for that, to do that, to get the flow in that method.
Okay.
And so basically, what you're looking at is, what do we have, about fifteen feet of green out front?
It would be more than that because this is eighteen feet, so it's about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, yeah, something like that. Yeah, because this is thirty. So, yeah, it's probably twenty-fourish.
Okay.
Had you prepared a landscaping plan to go with this one?
Yeah.
That's right, there's gonna be some shrubs around the sign, right?
Right, right. And there was like one higher shrub on the backside of the sign. My plan is all my stuff I apologize.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that you're not planting anything down in that swale that might ultimately grow and obstruct the flow path there.
I think there was a, oh yeah, not in the swale, but on the, I already had the square, we had a, I believe it was some sort of tree that was, could suffice in high saturated conditions if needed. So yeah, most of the shrubs are in front. This isn't, these are old plans. The modifications I took out of the walk because I wanted to provide that swell. But yeah, we'll still continue with the shrubs and the shrubs here, the tall shrub in the back and then the two trees here. This tree right here is QB, which, I'm sorry, my line is keep up, but it's a swamp white oak.
Yep.
And it can handle that.
So we don't have anything else that's gonna obstruct the view getting in and out there?
No. No, it's pretty far back.
Because we'll get the sidewalk on that side too?
Yeah, the sidewalk runs right down there.
Any questions?
Yeah. I don't understand all these degrees and all these figures. One thing I'm interested in is the water. Now, from what I gather, I don't understand why you can't put in a pipe that gets your extra water and connect it with the, and the bank put in a pipe and have it flow under the ditch instead of over the ditch and wash away. I don't see what changed and I don't see why we should have to take all the town water because they have no place to put it. And we gotta be careful that we don't flood the road. I don't understand why they can't put another drain in and have it go right down to the fire station. I don't know if this is a legal drain. There's nothing in writing. I don't know. That's my question.
And then there's gonna be two more buildings. There'll be two more shops or a roadway going in. There'll be another business coming in.
Two more.
Still, we'll have to go through the same process, so it's not-
No, no.
Definitely.
But what he's saying is that's gonna be more water coming in.
More water. Either that or put Groves Pond back again.
Yeah, but I still don't think that, I still don't think that that design adds more water onto the property than what exists. I think you'd still have to prove that to me.
The thing of it is though-
I think that actually alleviates water from leaving that property and entering yours. I don't see how that makes a worse situation for you. If you could prove that to me, I'd, I would feel differently.
We live there.
Yeah, but-
Since they uncovered that pipe for the drainage from the road, we have more water this last two years.
Right. Okay, so if I could address that, it seems like they're actually gonna raise that, so less water will enter that. That's a release for you.
This is gonna all leach out along this way also, correct? Or it's all in the back?
So it all comes into the basin, gets detained and then it leaks out that way.
Into the manmade wetlands.
The way it already flows.
Right.
See, I'm looking at it as change for you guys, right? This does not make a bad impact. I don't see this doing anything than possibly relieving some of the water. I think that's the question, is if I thought that this was affecting you adversely or causing more water, I wouldn't like it. But I don't think that's happening. I understand that you're already in a bad situation, but this certainly, I don't see how this makes that situation worse at all. If you could prove that to me, I would feel different.
I have no way of proving anything. Only thing I know, I lived there. We've lived there for over fifty years. We've seen the change. In this last two to three years, there's a heck of a lot of water coming down there.
Yeah, but I don't see how this makes that worse.
Nobody knows where the water's coming from.
It could be coming from across the street.
I think we're draining parking lots.
Again, all of those changes that have happened over those couple of years, I don't see how this makes-
I'm not saying it's all up to O'Reilly.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, how do you, how do you guys feel that that is worse for you than what you have now?
It just makes more water coming in.
No.
Well, one of the issues here is right now, the pipe's coming off the street and buried underground. So that is filtered, it slowed down from coming down through there, but it's still coming down through there. This is gonna be an open pipe, so if that water comes down, it's gonna come down faster than it is now.
And that's a big deal.
But the volume would be less, but the amount of water would be less.
Should be less.
Would be. That's not even a question. If the invert's higher now, there's less water. That's-
Well, I don't know that that, if you've got a pipe that's buried in the ground and stopped, how much water's going through?
I am not talking about how the flow is. I'm talking the volume that will be introduced to that pipe.
I am too. I'm talking about what's the volume of water that goes through the pipe if it's buried?
That goes through it?
Yeah, it has to come out of the ground.
So in your situation, the pipe's buried and the water is not making its way through it, that way it can't get on their property.
But it is coming down through there. That's what's happening now.
It's soaking into the ground. So, but the problem is, it's happening every rainfall event, you're getting some soaking in and it's gonna come out through the wetlands because it's at the same elevation. By raising it, it's gonna be less frequent. So on the smaller storms, it'll continue down one oh six and it won't get into that pipe.
But when it comes out of the pipe, it's gonna come out with volume.
For the bigger storm events, yes.
And to- Come out with velocity, not more volume.
Velocity.
To your point too, where if it's buried like that, in this, in that condition, you create a surcharge condition, which means it's coming back up to here and it's flooding this and going into the banks. It could potentially be going into the banks.
Which again, this would relieve that and be a better situation.
Right. So it's not a surcharge condition anymore.
It's just going back up further and then going out into the wetlands, which is not really wetlands. It's a wetland that the town created because of, and the bank created because of the water.
Okay, yes, but, okay, so the bank created some wetlands, if that's what you're saying, but how does this-
We can't do anything and they can't do anything. They can't even mow it because it's wetlands.
But again, how does this make that situation worse?
I think what we need to look at is what can we do to make the whole situation better? And my question to you is, would you be willing to allow that pipe to come right out open at the end and connect to the town?
Have one big pipe go right to the country club.
What pipe are you talking about, Gordon?
Well, that walkway that, when we went over there?
Yep.
To bring the pipe out there.
But that's not on anybody's property.
It's on their property.
So you guys own all the land behind the bank and behind this property?
That's John Peck's.
That's John Peck's.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, to alleviate this problem, would they be willing to have the pipe come out in the ditch? Right there where it ends now?
Yep. And take- From the bank to the ditch.
So- And take the water from the town directly?
And take the, well, see, that's-
Well, that's what I'm asking.
If there's, I mean-
There is no easement right now.
Right.
But I'm asking, is that, is that a viable solution? I mean, we-
I can see it coming from O'Reilly's, the bank, in a pipe. If they put in a pipe and bring it underneath that walkway and down to the country club, have it all piped right behind our house, right down.
There's that pipe. Okay.
Which pipe is that now?
That's the one that comes out here.
That's under the, that's under, that's under the drainage system.
That's under the bank.
Under the bank.
So that's the one that came from the street?
No. The street's way up top there.
That drain that's out in the field.
And that was the starting point? It was just a catch basin back in the day?
Well, it was a place to catch the water, I guess.
And that was never, that was always a ditch going down through there, but somebody brought a pipe in.
But the town's drainage never was hooked up to this. That just came in off the side of the street and dumped.
So is that pipe still there?
We don't know.
It's under the bank parking lot.
Well, we don't know what they did to it. I mean, it's under the drainage system.
It would be under the basin.
Under the drainage system here. See, that's, that's the drainage system there.
It would be in that basin. A portion of it would be.
Yeah. So that's it, this pipe?
I would think so, yeah. From the plans that you showed me out on the, on the-
Which basin?
So by, there's no discharge for this thing, right?
Well, there's-
It's under the parking lot.
That's under, under the drainage system.
It did go a portion of it.
We don't know if they destroyed it or not. Let's put it that way.
But here, it looks like they were grading out the parking lot, right? So they're grading out the parking lot for the bank right here.
Well, the parking lot's up here.
Yeah.
Way up here. This is the drainage system.
Parking lot's up here.
Yep.
Here, the pipe exists.
Right.
And they're grading out the parking lot.
Right.
Well, that's the slope coming down for the-
When did they, how much earlier is this?
Years before.
Years, yeah.
Here's a map of the easement.
Oh, there is an easement?
To John Peck. That's how I know it to John Peck.
Be there.
But we're not-
So there is an easement under the mutual?
Yes.
So they have drainage on that easement right now?
Looks like it's right on it.
But nothing from the town though.
Right.
But this goes out to that basin.
Basin's right about up in here somewhere.
So Peck wouldn't have had to give himself an easement, so that makes sense. Do you know why they installed that instead of just doing it as an open ditch?
Can we have a copy of this?
What, this pipe?
Yeah.
Well, we sold the lot to the bank.
Okay.
They gave them more.
So did the, were the, the bank the ones that installed the pipe so that they can do-
We still installed the pipe years ago, but we don't know if it's intact.
I guess the question is, why did you install the pipe in the first place?
Because it was a drainage easement.
And you didn't want it to be an open ditch anymore?
No, because we were selling the lot. And it's like probably ten feet under the lot.
Okay. So yeah, so it looks like this, but they just, they didn't connect anything. They got this-
Right. That's what they're doing. They're going over. They're going from here, they're going over and then going over our land.
Seems like they just need to cut a hole in the top of that pipe and-
Well, that's what, we don't mind people going through us right now, is right now they're going over us.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's gonna go over us. Like I said, there's gonna be two more lots and everybody's gonna go over us. If something's not done now. Like the next two lots, is it gonna be a Groves Pond retaining pond up further or what's it gonna be? Because the water's gonna go somewhere.
Goes downhill.
Right.
So if they were to cut, they put a catch basin on this side of the pipe and just drill down a-
Right, but we-
But that would solve the problem of flowing over that-
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. But a retaining pond is supposed to retain some, so the bank still has to fix that.
Well, no, the problem is it's not working because there's no place for it to go. This thing is supposed to regulate-
Well, they need to fix it to back to original-
Yeah, there's a lot of brush and stuff. Yeah, there's a lot of brush and stuff in there.
Brush and everything else, I mean.
They need to clean it up.
They need to clean it, so it's, so it's, can drain.
Yeah, you see how this, this is supposed to be flowing somewhere, and then everything below the bottom of that weir is supposed to.
It's supposed to go somewhere, but the somewhere is over us.
Yes, cause they just never put any sort of downstream overflow going across the road there. Which is pretty wild.
So like I was just telling.
Do you have that plan that we were out in the field with, um, that you had, that showed the? The bank. The bank design?
The bank, that would be the.
Mutual bank?
Mutual.
You know, if it.
Because they definitely showed the outlet on that, on that design.
On the banks?
Yeah.
Like I was saying to him, if he could take his bubbler, you know, it, we're gonna retain the water, and it's gonna drain into the land. But the overflow is gonna go out into the field, if you could take the bubbler and tie it into the pipe.
Well, that's what I was saying. If, if the overflow from here went into a pipe that went out, then it's gone. It's not flooding the field.
Right.
So we, we want it right to the country club.
So what happens, what happens to this ditch? Like, does that, does that ditch back up?
Comes like this, and then goes right down here again.
But it doesn't flow over here. Only this area does, right?
Right.
Okay, so. And right now, our site flows kind of like perpendicular, it still goes towards this, but it kind of goes perpendicular. So there might be some water that, in existing condition, flows this way to get to here. Probably not, this is probably the lowest point. But we are definitely, we're definitely outletting all of our discharge points towards this ditch. So this water should, our water should follow this now. And not contribute to your issue here.
Going down the back ditch.
Right.
And I think there was a little lag, right? When we went out in the field, there was a.
Well, something does that.
Back there, right?
That wasn't ever there.
But it's, it's there now, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It just compared it.
So I think to, to his point, when it does flow, it should theoretically go in that boot, in that ditch, instead of flooding the area in the back there.
Now that ditch flows down.
And it comes out right here.
Behind that house door.
But it's, it's concentrated in the ditch, which is what the ditch is there for, right?
That also comes from on Ponsett Street, from how many wickets.
It comes right up from right here, comes right down here, and like that. So we're getting everybody.
But that ditch isn't necessarily overflowing, right? Isn't the issue where it's overflowing?
Definitely it will.
Well, you get the hundred year storm.
Yeah, a hundred year storm.
About ten, twenty of them a year.
But there is an easement here for that.
There's no.
Do you know how far your property is up in the back home? I think that's forty feet.
Maintain it or anything?
Yeah, I think.
Is there any ongoing maintenance agreement?
This is mutual.
So. So I've got, so I've.
Your property is here.
Okay.
So that's forty feet back. Would that be touching yours?
Yeah, um, so, we're, yeah, we're like kinda up against.
You're not, you're not as far as they are.
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying, how far up do you think you are from the back line?
Yeah, you're right there, about forty-two feet. Oh, yeah, yeah. From. Is that, so yeah, it's, uh, it's about. Yeah, I gotta scale if you want it. Yeah, that'd be perfect. Probably like fifty feet. Yeah, I'm scaling like forty-two.
That's forty feet exactly from the corner of the line, that pipe.
To the easement.
To the, to the easement.
So their property is here and it's sixty feet back?
It's our property. Yeah, it's forty feet, forty feet.
So the easement doesn't touch their property, that's what I was looking at.
Now, it looks like it's that short of the property regardless, right?
Yeah. Well, it's forty feet here, I don't know how wide these.
If it's a twenty foot wide easement, so there you go, sixty feet.
And you said you were sixty?
Sixty feet back.
Which makes sense, cause then they kept the easement off of his.
Well, if the pipe was going back straight.
Back, right?
If that was going back straight, the pipe would hit on your property.
Yeah, cause it would project at an angle. It's shown on this, the twenty-four inch concrete pipe. This is the mutual plan. See, yeah, look, there's a swale, that's where the outlet's supposed to be. So there's like, that's where it's supposed, that's where they. Now, we were in that swell, I didn't see a twenty-four inch pipe.
It's under.
Oh, it's under that?
It's under the, um, drainage.
So that's the outlet, you saw the head wall on this side, there was a pipe coming out the outside.
Honestly, cause that's sixty, it's sixty, so this is sixty-two, so probably, just fix a muck, you'll probably go aside.
But on the back, on the street side of the drainage.
What's, what's your pipe coming out at the back corner? If that one's at sixty point nine.
Sixty-six, is it?
We're grading at sixty-eight.
They say in the pipe.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty.
So there's.
Inverted, pretty much all sixty-one, really.
Plus two feet, sixty-three. So it's, those should be underneath.
So it's probably, what's happening there's?
It's a twenty-four inch pipe.
But that basin just doesn't outlet. The problem is that mutual bank basin, it just sits there.
Needs to.
And that overflow's over the edge into the wetlands.
Right, but if it had a basin.
If it had an inlet that could just drop right into that pipe, it seems like that would solve part of the problem.
Overflow.
Right, just the overflow.
Just the overflow, yeah, so it would still be detained in the basin, it would have to go through that weir. It would, and then after it goes through the weir, it would drop in an inlet and go into the existing pipe that's there.
Exactly.
And then discharge on the other side of your walk.
And that's the same way, like I was saying, the bank should do the same thing, fix their retention pond, and their overflow.
Yeah, it's weird about why it didn't before, right?
No, they, they just left it the way it was, and they just let it overflow.
Well, that.
No, I mean, like why the original plan wasn't. The plan doesn't even show a detention basin.
The bureau that made out those plans for Martha Borden just graduated from college. This was her first job. And everything was accepted. And the conservation didn't let them go.
I mean, just cause it was her first job, doesn't mean she had a bad.
Over.
Job.
Over the land and then into the ditch.
Who is it that wanted that conservation?
I just couldn't understand that. We fought it and fought it and fought it, and it didn't do any good.
You guys fought this?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I thought you sold this.
We did, but we.
We did.
We didn't put the drainage in.
Yeah.
I, I see what you're saying. You sold the lot, didn't like the plan that they came up for.
The drainage plant, and then it was all over from there. We were getting the water.
So their inlet at the street is at seventy-one point nine? I mean, I, when was that designed, like? I don't know when the, the Massachusetts film manual came into play.
It was around that time.
Yeah, so theirs is at. Twenty-seven feet higher, so it's eight inches, yeah, ten inches higher.
Yes.
Eight inches higher. You're right.
So the invert of that concrete pipe is sixty-one roughly there.
Yeah, and it's coming out there at sixty-seven, I think, somewhere thereabouts, so that pipe.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we're coming out at grade, and that thing's buried five feet below grade, and then two feet of pipe, so.
Does that cut the corner of your lot?
What do you mean by that, Frank? The existing pipe.
Uh, I'm not sure.
The survey didn't pick up that structure out in the field, right? Um, yeah, I think they did. Uh, I think it's, I think they picked up an easement too, but. Yeah, it's right there. That's a structure. So that's probably where the pipe is, right? So the pipe goes like this until it hits the corner.
Yep. So how about if you had a manhole there to take your overflow?
Right. I mean, that's an easement, that's pretty easy to do, I mean, we just have to, if the pipe's still there, you know? Um, and you know for a fact that they didn't demo it? I, we don't know.
But it's down, it's down deeper than where they were working.
Right.
Yeah.
What did they do to that? Are those shown right here?
This is changed, I never even wanted to go that far.
The G O report? Which I just. Just follow them. Um, so, I mean, yeah, I have, I, that, that's an idea, I mean.
I mean, that would take care of anything that's flowing over, would then go into the pipe, we're not dumping it out into the lot behind you. It's going in the pipe and going.
But we want it to go right to the country club.
Right, we've, we've had a lot of damage. Yeah, I mean, that's, but that's a lot, that's nothing to do with you, though, that's the bank more than anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing, like, overall, I mean.
Well, I mean, the, the whole thing is, is what I'm looking for is maybe to find a solution for more than one thing here.
Exactly, right.
If, if we could get the town to bring their pipe down, and it dumps into that, if you're willing to give them an easement to that point. And.
And that's just an overflow.
Yeah.
Also.
Yep, and it gets into there, then maybe we could have the town run the pipe the rest of the way down.
Pipe service.
Right.
You in that easement and then bury it instead of having the over channel? Here, here's my concern, that, that, we were out there and nothing flew, like, no, there was no flow coming from that pipe. And you said there never really is. It all flows, it's always. But nothing comes out of that.
But it has to go into that structure before it would go in the pipe.
Right, but if nothing comes out of it, and this is open, cause we were out there, we saw it was open, and there was water in it. Is that pipe damaged? Is it not connected?
We don't know.
That's, that's the problem. There is water, there is water that puddles in here, so.
I mean, we could have a camera run down it.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could do that.
I'm, I'm just trying to reach out and see if we can solve more than one problem.
Right, but if, like, if there's no flow coming out of this pipe, and this one is still full every time you go out there, then is that pipe?
Look, I mean, it could be, I mean.
Right, I mean, that wasn't, that, I, I, I didn't wanna do a design that connected into an unknown like that.
Right.
Um, but I, I, I honestly, I didn't really think about that either, just because it was such an unknown, but, um.
My only point is, is then whatever water's coming off the street that does come down that pipe, then you're not really dealing with it, it's going in there, it's.
I mean.
Down river and gone.
I mean, that's an idea too, maybe it's just a street pipe that goes there, and, and our, and our flow still goes to that, that drainage down that way.
Well, even if, if we can put it all into that, then it's.
Uh, okay, here's, here's my problem with that. Right now, you guys don't experience this flow from our property. Directly from this discharge point. If you add all of our flow here, you're gonna get quite a flow coming out of that pipe. Instead of coming around this way.
We want your overflow. We don't.
And that's what you're talking about, the overflow. You're going into a detention basin first, you're not dumping all your catch basins directly into it.
Right.
And, and we don't know that this is directly going in here, part of it might just overflow and then eventually go that way, we don't, we don't really know what's going on.
Right.
Right?
But we, we've got like three or four different factors here that are creating a problem, and I'm just looking for a solution that could take care of it.
And that's a twenty-four inch pipe, right? So the pipe coming from the street, closing a twelve inch pipe. The one from the basin should be pretty minimal flows, right? You're gonna get, you know, see if that's.
Coming from the streets, minimum.
It should be.
Should be.
Right, it's gonna be constrained by a twelve inch pipe. So if you've got a twelve inch pipe plus your overflow going into a twenty-four inch pipe. I don't think that's gonna limit what's happening here to cause problems on.
No, I agree. If it goes, if it actually flows it.
If it does flow, so.
Right, and I, I don't know how we determine that.
Well, I think the first thing to do would be to have a camera go up the pipe and check it.
Does the highway department have one?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And just have.
And what I was told, they don't have one.
Well, they, I don't care if they have one or not, they can get one. I mean, you know, if that's, if we can.
Yeah.
Create a prob- something, something that takes care of their problem, then, you know, they can, they can do some investigating work.
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be helpful, and I think.
And then if they're at it.
It'd be good to see what's happening at that manhole in the street too, that's paved over.
And then the bank could do a manhole and put their flow into that.
Their overflow.
Their overflow.
Right.
And then that just alleviates everything all in the same pipe.
They have to fix their drainage.
Yeah.
And then do the overflow, and then everybody goes through.
Right.
But then, you know.
Then nobody's dumping out in the back there and.
And it's in the channel.
They can pipe it all the way to the golf course, cause we've had damage and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it just, today, you would just use plastic pipes.
Right.
No. We can't guarantee that part, obviously. The, the piping all the way from your outlet through your easement and all that.
Well, we can, we can try to.
We, we could try and negotiate and work it, but, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you guys.
That's not gonna, that's not gonna change your design.
Right.
Really.
Right, it's, it's an added structure, which I'm sure my client will be, will be fine with.
Cause it'll be positive.
But again, we need confirmation before we construct this, that that actually continues through. But it's, it's not broken anywhere, it's not, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Um, that would definitely have to be. Yeah, I think it would be contingent upon it being a viable pipe to connect to. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Whether it was crushed or not, when they were putting the bond in another.
If they can do a camera up through there, they can find out. See, it's either gonna go or it's not gonna go.
I, I think that's the resolution, and then we can cover it over. Somebody can cover it over, and we don't have to see all this water.
Is it actually flooding above the banks of that ditch?
They'll come up high though.
But it doesn't, would currently overflow, right now stays in the ditch?
The one from the back ditch will come up.
The back one will.
Return it, we can make up.
It'll actually back up, and it'll flood this area.
Yeah, no.
Now, John Peck has a.
It's not really that.
It's supposed to put a pipe in there, but.
It's not really.
You know, here, this will never get done. So I don't know if it will get done or it won't get done. I have no clue.
Okay.
It's up to John.
So the, the, the thing of it is, though, like I said, you're gonna get two more buildings here, one way or another. There's gonna be two more plots here.
And they will have to design it so that they don't build it in such a way that they're gonna create more flow coming off. They're gonna have to do the same thing, stick basins in the back.
So, and we get, we get all this, and where's there a retention pond here? There's nothing here.
No, there is. There's one along the edge here, there's a, there's a pond there, there's some other stuff in the back there. It's not big, I mean, I know there's some stuff.
Like I said, Groves Pond took up this whole area right here. We used to skate on it. As a fact, Steve Hayward used to skate on it, he said too. But, and they filled it in. So there should be another retention pond, since this isn't doing anything right here, and everything can go that way.
That's a hill, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, a pipe can.
Well, I mean, if you were capturing the water up there, it could be detention, but.
Yeah.
You're not gonna move it up there.
So if we were able to figure out a way to get it into that pipe, would you guys have any issue with what O'Reilly is proposing?
No, well, no, we're not against it, or I was, we just don't want more water, and all those farmers will get it through the pipe, their overflow.
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay.
And you're gonna retain, what, you're gonna get the overflow from the town, the overflow.
Correct, the pipe is, the pipe that's gonna be coming through the site is gonna be higher than the main line in the street.
Yes. So that should be very minimal.
No.
Yeah, only in the really big storms.
Are we still looking into who's dumping into this?
Right.
This uh, town.
The mass D O T plans look like it was only parking lot here and then a catch basin here, it looked like it was just the two of those based on what they had on their plans.
So those.
Stop and shops goes to the back.
Oh, I know they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we're getting um.
All Seasons.
All Seasons and we're getting.
Happy Gardens and Lionville.
Lionville. We're draining the parking lot.
The street.
Both of them?
The street.
Yeah, they were both tied in.
Yeah, the only one that looks like per the D O T plans, it looked like there's a catch basin here, a catch basin here that came through here, all this stuff went in the street.
That's gone.
Here.
Yeah, so not not all seasons.
The banks driveway.
Why can't they go down there too?
Uh, they they can now, so the current plans that they have show that there's all that stuff that's out in the street.
Would the town give them an easement to drain into the town?
Who?
Like, there's a catch basin, what'd you say, right here, in the corner of their parking lot?
Uh, you don't need an easement to drain from your site into the city property, you would need an easement if the if the town was draining through your property.
No, we don't have one. I know John Peck doesn't have one.
But there is an easement on your property though.
Yeah.
There is.
Yes.
Oh, on our property, for John Peck, it's John Peck's, it's for the farmland.
It's probably for drainage in general, I would imagine, right?
But the town doesn't have the easement.
The town.
The town does not have an easement.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're draining part of the town.
Uh, yeah, it seems like partially, yeah, whatever it's going back there is going through your property, if it's coming from the town or private property, it's wherever it's coming from, it's going through, yeah. But it does look like uh, All Seasons and the Tedeschi's there, it's no wonder Tedeschi's is uh, going into the street, it does go down that way in a larger pipe.
Probably not, largely not, fourteen inches. So.
Yeah, I think that's why there's overflow.
Yeah, right.
You get so much volume, the fourteen inch pipe can't take it all.
Yeah, but it's only like three acres, it's not that big of an area.
Unless unless they're saying this parking lot does it too, like the front parking lot does that?
No, but even if each one of those is an acre, it's not, it's not a tonus.
But once you get down by the cat wash?
Yeah, yeah, it should, that pipe should keep getting bigger. Oh, does? On what bench?
In front of the cat wash.
You got a plan for down there?
Uh, down to the highway department.
Yeah.
Twelve inch.
Yeah, and then when it gets past, um.
Should give you guys my card if you guys.
Indian.
Yeah.
That's like high pressure coming out of there, but then, by then.
What's the one that goes, what's the one that goes up beside Allied, that the street?
Indian Path.
Indian Path, after that's eighteen inch pipe.
I think they're fixing to fix the road.
Pipe for what, three hundred feet at that point, from Indian Path Road?
Well, I mean, it's all of those connecting into that and then it gets into eighteen inch pipe, so.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's only eighteen inches for the last three hundred, you got all that feeding and then they bumped it up for the last.
I think we need to talk to that, highway department just fixing their drainage system in one oh six.
I I I can tell you this, I designed a Walmart, just their parking lot, had to outlet with a thirty inch at the end, so, I mean, that. That's what, fourteen, eleven, fourteen acres, eleven fourteen acres of of pavement, I mean, granted, that's not all pavement, but that's still a pretty big area.
All right, well, I think what we need to know is, we need to move forward with this.
Yep.
And. I don't know how you do that.
So if we're talking about potential conditions, right, would we be looking for the highway department to be the ones to, I know it can't be a condition for you guys, but for the highway department to be taking the lead on the investigation component of what's actually happening out there with those pipes?
Yep.
How likely is it that they would actually do it? Can we, there's no mechanism by which we could force them to do it.
I talked to him today and I told him, you know, I'd get him back in touch with him tomorrow. They know that there's a problem out there too, so. They're, obviously, they're not gonna do any drainage work in one oh six, that's years down the road.
Mm-hmm.
They're not gonna open up the road.
But even investigating that pipe, if you get a CCTV truck that's gonna be two thousand dollars worth of work, is they have two thousand dollars to spend on getting something out there to see what's going on?
I'll reach out to them and see.
Would you be okay with a condition that says that should that pipe be suitable for a connection that you would redesign your plans such that you connect to that pipe instead of discharging with surface?
Uh, yes, I mean, that's like, if there is a pipe that runs through there and is still there, I think that's an easy connection, so. We, I mean, I could consult the client, but I'm gonna say I reckon that we would, we would be okay with that.
Okay.
Now, what if that pipe isn't any good?
Then my beautiful design that I've.
Works.
No, that pipe that's under underneath.
Right, right, I I think, I think they can, I don't know, maybe, but that's the, that's the thing.
Well, see, now the bank's gotta fix this stuff anyways, they can put a pipe in for everybody.
They they could.
Well, they they gotta fix it, it's a mess, it hasn't been working.
The the problem happens, I mean, i- if they have to rip out their parking lot and everything, I don't see that, you know.
No, fix the back of it, you know, fix the drainage that was as existing.
Right.
Right, but the the pipe, the easement, the way the easement's laid out, it kinda hits the corner right there, so if they did have to tear the whole thing out, they'd be tearing up a chunk of the parking lot back here probably.
I mean. The only other option would be to do, do something with John Peck too.
Well, I don't think John Peck would wanna fix the edge drainage.
No, no, it would be for an easement.
An easement for the pipe.
Oh.
Right.
So, like you said, you you'd be amendable to doing that if if that's a viable.
Yeah, and what's the process, they like just send you guys plans, or do I have to look how many fun you guys again, how's that, how would that work?
I don't think it would be a public hearing, I think you would submit something for change for the, yeah.
Okay, gotcha, and what about?
Because the only thing would be change is just the overflow.
Right.
Overflow.
Right, uh, an additional manhole structure.
Yeah.
You'd actually have a pipe under your.
If if it's there, that's that's.
That's the question.
Investigation's gonna find out, because.
Well, that's probably only going to, you know, there.
Oh, it doesn't go all the way?
I I, well, I don't know how far it goes out into the field.
They're gonna go to that structure?
Yeah, it's gonna go at least onto their property.
They had that structure back here, I think they showed on the survey.
Yeah, right.
So theoretically, the pipe should connect from here all the way there.
That wasn't our land though, so I don't know what we'd, we wouldn't be over on their land. You don't get the pipeline all the way up to.
That pipe that you had in the picture doesn't walk that far?
No.
Oh, I thought that was like hundreds of feet of pipe.
I misinterpreted that picture.
Oh, it stops at your property, it stops at your old property, right?
Stops here?
That's.
No, the, yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Okay, I I misunderstood.
I thought, yeah, from the picture, I thought, it looked like a.
You could put your bubble or on the other end, and it'd be, it'd be off our property.
Cause the easement doesn't hit his property.
Yeah, cause the pipe stops here.
Probably right there, yeah.
The easement stops forty feet up the bank's line.
Well, that's like I said, Lou said John, give him a, a corner.
Or you're gonna temporary right for construction, and then he can just have an easement or something like that.
Uh, would you have an issue of if he uses the corner, he's in the wetlands?
Yeah, that is all wetlands, right?
That's an issue.
Well, that's, like I said, manmade wetlands from the, the town manmade wetlands.
Yeah, it's less than five thousand square feet, the conservation could approve it.
So, so you're saying the pipe stops right at the property line?
Well, imagine, we wouldn't have gone right over on their land.
But the investigation would tell us how long it is anyway, so we'd be able to confirm.
John, if you see that little ditch, had a bunch of plastic there and was all dug up, so John was in the wetlands there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is your pipe just went over and stopped?
Somebody else tied into it, also, that that manhole was tied into it at one point in time.
Also, it does connect.
It was, but if you see, there's a ditch, there's a ditch in this area, well, over here, there's a, uh, this is, yeah, it would be here. And here, it was all like black plastic and and stuff like that, which somebody's been in there digging, which we know.
I don't know who it was.
We don't know who it was, but.
You can't see over there.
Just so, I'm just confused, so the the pipe that we saw the pictures of.
Yeah.
On the end, when you guys came to your property line and stopped it, it was just an open twenty-four inch pipe? Just collecting groundwater?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Open to the surface.
Okay.
Open to the surface.
Was there a ditch or anything going into it, did you build a head wall or anything like that, like there is in the downstream side? I'm just wondering how, how how anything fed into it is what I'm getting at.
There, just a little bit, but there was nothing in it, and then all of a sudden, it was, you know, um, I I I'm pretty sure that that manhole.
But somebody probably connected to it and tied it into that catch basin that is there.
Plastic is all dug up, so we have no idea what's going on with it after that.
I mean, I guess, I guess that makes sense with the, down in there, I've seen puddling, so nothing really flows, and then your pipe out doesn't flow any, nothing flows out of that, so. It's just buried, it's a buried pipe.
Okay.
It's not even perforated, so it's not even catching groundwater, um, right. It's too bad you guys had taken it back, that was, it's all.
Well.
Good pipe, it looked new, I, from the pictures, so.
It wasn't over the time.
Everything's new sometime, right?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, you'd have to get the bank to do what I'd propose them to do if it was there, you know, and how do you do that?
Well, they need to do something, so, you know, we can propose that they.
So I think the condition can still be the same, if there is a pipe there and it's available for a connection, you guys will connect to it.
Well.
If there's, if there's not, we can't make them build something on somebody else's property.
Okay, so what if we just put like a berm right on, right, we'll block it right off, right, we'll go put a berm right up where it is, of the same elevation as what we have on the other side of the fence, on our side, and we'll put a berm all the way down in the back ditch, and we'll keep all the water over there, and you guys can do whatever you want, and whatever comes through that pipe right now, comes through the pipe, which isn't much. We'll put that berm, we'll get a little permit from the conservation, and we'll keep all the water over there, you guys can have all the water, you can do whatever you want.
You're talking about.
Right here, there's a little bit of a high spot right here.
Yeah.
Just continue that berm all the way down there, and you guys can have that whole situation, make all the wetlands you want.
It'll, it'll definitely make its way to this ditch, for sure.
Yeah.
And come, it'll, that comes back to you.
It's gonna come back to us, but we're gonna, and then something else is gonna have to happen, but.
Well, one of the things, you know, we gotta have Mutual come back in here, we gotta take a look at their drainage deal. So, that's, that's a number one issue. And we'll do that in conjunction with the conservation.
Right, actually, it's just aggravating.
I think the pipe would be the best, the best thing. But we want it right to the country club and cover it over. After fifty years of putting up with this foolishness. Every storm, I look out the window and see the, the depth of the water.
Right.
We shouldn't have to do that.
But it's in the swell though, right, right now, it just gets close to the top, it's in the ditch, except for the portion that's on the east side of that.
Making wetlands, they're still making it wet.
Yeah, you guys, you guys don't have like puddling wetlands there, do you?
Yeah.
All the way here, all all through here, it's all wet, and when the, when this all backs up.
Because the ditch is too small, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That too.
Okay.
The pipe, I think, is the answer. Between the town, between the town, O'Reilly's, the bank, and John Peck, we should be able to have that filled in.
Or whoever owns the other two lots up there, who's that, John?
John.
Cause it's coming this way.
Okay, and we'll pursue that. But O'Reilly's, we need to do something.
Yeah, and I, and I think the design that you guys are providing should help the problem, I I think the bigger issue seems like it's a, it's a town problem and a bank maintenance problem, more so than it is anything associated with this new project coming in front of us.
But we also have to plan though, planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the other two lots, where's all that water? You know what I mean?
It it's gonna go where it goes now, is what it's supposed to, well, that that's the regulation, right? It it's supposed to do what it does today, it's supposed to be no worse than it is today, uh, we can ask them to oversize their systems, maybe when they come in and plan for trying to control a little bit more, uh, and see, see if they'll do that as part of the design, that might help what's happening in the back.
I mean, clearly, the water's been there longer than any of us, I mean, the water was always making its way through there, the best we can do is plan to contain it.
But we never had the town coming over us.
And we never had bomb pots in the street either. I mean, all the new facilities that are coming in, looking for a place to dump, and.
Right. We just happen to be town health.
Right.
Yep, and the mass D O T plans did show that there was a pipe coming in whenever those were built that was draining to the back of the property there, when when they originally redid one oh six, however many years ago that was, they didn't show the detail of exactly where that went, just a pipe going to the back of the property there. So that was the original design, and then at some point, it looks like the town connected this pipe that used to just come back here into the rest of the system.
I told you before, across the street was the big chicken farm.
Yeah.
And he owned both sides of the street, so he tied into that.
And it came across the road into the back there.
It was only that big.
It was only a little ditch.
It was only that big.
They didn't have much water back then.
No. Hundred year stone didn't have.
Chicken, the chickens drank it.
All these places weren't there then.
Okay, what's the pleasure for O'Reilly's?
I would make a motion that we approve it with a number of conditions as it relates to the drainage issue and some of the basic ones as it relates to signage and hours of operation and the typical conditions that we have for a project of this kind.
Any comments, or?
I uh, I have no problem with the design as it is, if we can get that pipe and make it, I'd certainly think that's better, and so that's, other than that, I have no problems with the design itself.
Yeah, and I think apart from the standard ones, I think one of those conditions should be being able to tie into that pipe, should there be a pipe and it be feasible to connect to. Uh, although I can't.
Standard order of conditions you're talking about, so we don't really have standard conditions for.
I guess it applies to the traditional zoning regulations in terms of hours of operation.
Well, he would be telling us that, what their hours of operations are, and delivery times and stuff like that, I don't know.
It'll comply.
Okay. Do we, do we have regulations for how?
Hours of operations and stuff, not that I know of. I mean, I think it's really the store that tells us what time they're gonna be opening, what time they're gonna close, what time or days their deliveries are, we don't have a standard operating system.
You don't have overnight deliveries?
No, no, it's all within the the work hour, I think, um, when Colleen was here with the traffic, I think she she mentioned.
She said it was the morning, I thought.
Yeah, it men- mentioned it was, yeah, in the morning when they opened.
Yeah, with one of the big tractor trailers or something?
Uh, WB fifty, which is the, there, I think it's a thirty-five foot bed and and, yeah, the rest of it's like, whatever makes it fifty B.
Do you have any idea when those deliveries might occur, so we could reference something in the information, do you have the traffic report with you?
I I don't, do you, um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, as I recall, she had mentioned that it's at the be- the beginning of the workday.
Do we know what their hours of operation are?
We were talking about the loading zones and all that, remember?
If I remember correctly, I think it's like seven thirty-five, five thirty, seven thirty, five thirty-ish.
It must be later than that.
Well, seven thirty, seven thirty, something like that, I, I'm I'm honestly, I I wish, I wish my client was here, he definitely knows that, and I think it.
Well, these are the things that obviously the board needs to know for any type of conditions, I wasn't prepared to tell them what the conditions are.
I mean, I can give up all.
Dumpster pickup when they come in, delivery times, outside storage limitations, no unregistered vehicles, I mean, stuff like that, I mean.
Why don't we do this then, if we're not prepared with standard conditions to be able to come up with them on the fly here? I'd be okay with closing the public hearing portion of it and developing draft conditions for your review and consideration that we could act on then, provided you're okay with them at the next hearing, is that something that we can do?
Yeah, that would work, yep.
That's good.
So I would.
So we'll give a conditional. So we'll give a conditional approval?
Yep, subject to development of the, uh, conditions associated with the approval and, uh, our subsequent vote, the following here. So just vote to close the public hearing for this project.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review nineteen S P R zero three for three thirty Plumb Street.
You had no other comments?
No, can we come to that meeting?
Yeah, well, absolutely. Okay.
I second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make, make a motion to reopen the irregular scheduled planning board meeting.
Second.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So then we'll work on developing conditions of approval.
Okay.
We'll send them to you.
Sounds good.
Make sure that your client's okay with them as it relates to all the traditional items that we would include. Uh, so we want your input prior to developing those in terms of hours of operation.
Sure, I mean, definitely, I, I was unaware of a, of a list of things you need, so if I, uh, if, if you could s- send me, I don't wanna like just say something to him like, obviously if you wanna know, you know, when they pick up the receptacles, I'll tell them that. If you wanna know the delivery times, I'll tell them that.
Wanna give a copy of that?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much.
And honestly, this really is the first one I've actually done, so this is all new to me.
Okay.
I'm glad to be the first. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any other meeting on this?
Well, uh, our next meeting is the eighteenth.
Thank you.
And just because we closed the public hearing portion of it, there isn't really gonna be much of a, a dialogue between, uh, I guess your ability to enter comments into the records, is the way I understand it.
It's closed.
So it would just be our deliberation and the subsequent vote at that point.
So you're gonna work on the pipe?
Yeah.
And if not, though, no, this is wetlands supposedly.
Mm-hmm.
Can that be a retention pond? Since it's a wetland?
If somebody stuck some shovels in there and turned it into a retention pond, you would have to get approval from Conservation Commission. There are certain thresholds for the area that you could impact, but if it's just naturally functioning that way, it could continue to function that way. As soon as you start, yeah, as soon as you start digging in there and modifying it, you have to go through Conservation and get their approval to do that. And that would probably be a hard thing to do.
Well, maybe if the pipe goes in, they would be able to do wetlands.
If it dries out over time and two, three years from now, it ends up being dried, somebody could come back and redeline it, and then you could go back to Conservation and get their approval that it's not a wetland, and then you can do a number of things. Yeah, John, John could do whatever he wants to do.
Water and more places for water to go.
Yep.
So.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we want to adjourn?
Come on, I'm not gonna.
How you doing?
He's only been waiting for.
Did we want to adjourn now?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Oh, that's Joe.
Four minutes, we should be able to get you out of here quick.
Couple hours. Where are we working? Plumpton?
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering, Brook. Was at Brookside Realty, owned about thirty-two acres of land um, on Franklin Street. The, the blue power, power line is right here, so it's just on the north side of the power line. And what they would like to do is carve a lot out. We, this is obviously at a hundred and twenty a small scale, but because it's so large, but this is what the lot's gonna be looking like. A hundred and fifty feet of frontage and forty thousand, six hundred and five square feet of upland. Uh, there is a little isolated vegetated wetland there. And we're not proposing to do anything with the back lot right now. Actually, most of it's wet.
Will you be able to do anything with it if it's only got eighty feet of frontage?
Well, we could get a retreat lot if, if we could get enough area, right?
Where's the other house, Joe, over here?
Yeah, the, uh, the old, I don't know, yeah, the old, the.
That's one of the blueberries?
No, no, it's a little further down, um, just so, to the little white house, right?
No, that one's out close to the street, and then there's another one that sits back further, right? With the barn?
Yeah, it's gonna be the.
Oh, yeah, all right, now I know what you're talking about. Pete's the grovers?
Grover, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I saw their signs on the other side of the street too. Do they have something else going on there?
Yeah, the, uh, what do you mean, on this side?
Yeah.
That I don't know.
Somebody was doing, I took that back road the other day. There was a bunch of development on the left-hand side of the road going north down.
The Brookside just built, on the other side of the power line, they built that house there last year.
That's a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And forty thousand upland.
Get this one tinted to the front.
Oh.
Certainly looks like it meets the ratio.
Yeah, he's got this shit factor of forty-eight on there.
I think they did, oh yeah.
See if I can.
Okay.
Make a motion to make a motion to approve the plan of land for Brookside Realty being lot one oh four dash five B. On map one oh, one oh four.
Is that how people are naming lots now? With the, the As and the Bs and all that?
So they just.
Okay.
If the, yeah, in Halifax, we actually have to go to the assessor's office and.
And they gave you that number? Okay.
It's like Plymouth, Plymouth District, actually Kingston is also.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion.
All right, second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So you're good?
Yes.
Can I take the elastic?
You can take the elastic.
Does it matter if this says lots five and nine? Is there two lots involved?
No, well, there is. On the town, pointing back to that, this is on the next map. Showing us lots five and nine, of the town, of Halifax, assesses map one oh three and lot two one ninety-four.
But it is one lot, it just spanned across the two assessor's maps?
It's spanned across maps, right.
That's the lot number she gave you, right?
Don't they still keep the same number, even if it jumps from one sheet to the next?
No, it did.
But it is one lot based on?
On, on D is one, yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
So we can do the minutes.
Close the minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, you had to do the thing when you read it, all the comments? When you read it?
I tried the best I could with the audio, so.
Those left stuff in the same. Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to pay bill to reprint today for copies invoice number two one one seven seven in the amount of thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
A motion, is it a second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to pay bill to Theresa Vernard for reimbursement for time, effort, and cost incurred in the amount of seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents.
A motion, is it a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three signatures.
That's minutes. Autumn Lane?
Oh, um, yeah, I meant to, um, print out the email. Um, Don Trionne got ahold of, um.
P M P?
And, uh, he thought he had requested to have a final inspection done on Autumn Lane. I contacted Merrill, who was actually the review engineer on that. He said, no, we don't know of it. I said, okay, go out and do a final inspection and.
Is it money?
Peter, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, Peter Palmieri said he wouldn't be able to get out there till sometime next, the end of next week to do a final inspection. Uh, Don Trionne said they're still working on the asphalt, so at least that's almost finished up.
Yeah.
Um.
I happened to be at P M Ps today, and he said he was working on it.
Oh, and Duncan Donuts wanted to know if they could put a little park bench on their patio that they have on the site plane.
Only they built that patio bigger.
They just wanna make sure it's okay, and he said something about putting some planters out there as well. He just wanted to make sure that you guys didn't have a problem with that, since we already.
I don't like the color.
Who, does it say Duncan Donuts?
Yeah, is that an advertisement? That might be a sign. Do we know where they wanna put it? Cause that sidewalk in the front wasn't gonna be that big, right? Cause they kinda cut it at a weird angle. Is there enough still for people?
They made a patio. We approved them to have a, like a ten by ten patio out front.
And just has nothing on it?
There's nothing on it right now, but he wants to make sure that's okay.
Provided they still get all their ADA walkway compliance and all that stuff, but you still need to be able to get in and have your circulation and everything.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
Yeah, I think like the patio is like in the.
Mike, what do you say?
I thought they didn't build that patio.
Investigate.
Uh, that sounds about right.
Yeah. Investigation. I say the more greenery, the better, so if he wants to put planters out there, by all means.
Is the bench okay?
Provided that he doesn't impact any sort of compliance issues. Should we make him put an ashtray with the bench?
Oh, that'd be nice. You know, I've tried to get the ashtray out front here, but nobody goes.
And I might actually encourage people to smoke. Maybe we shouldn't do that.
Sweet.
And Dubai?
What's the air machine in the bathroom?
So he actually says that Autumn Lane is complete, huh?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Build and permit for River Street solar project.
We're just doing our. This is the big, uh, River Street solar project.
Wha- what are we signing here?
The building permit.
Why, we just curious.
Are we saying that the plans match the planning board plans?
Like, what am I signing?
I'm assuming that they match other than the modules that have been changed because they're upgraded now. According to the applicant.
Did they have to sign some sort of certification that say, that says the plans that we're submitting match the permitting plans?
Well, why don't we, why don't we send a, a note off to the building inspector that the plans have to match what was signed?
But I think that's what they're asking us to sign, right?
Yeah, so, just send a letter off to him saying that they have to match the plans that we signed.
But are we not signing this saying that they do?
Yeah, I don't get it.
Is that not the whole point of signing this thing? Saying we agree that what they're submitting now matches what we approved? I, is that, I don't, I don't know.
As far as I know, the only thing that they have changed again is the modules, cause the modules themselves are newer, that's whatever.
Is there any sort of revisions indicated on the plans or otherwise, pretty straightforward?
And that's just the actual unit itself.
So what's the construction details of the?
We just send, send a note over to the building inspector that the plans have to meet what was signed.
Okay. These don't even have the site plan layout to it, huh?
No, and I think that we were under the assumption the whole time that at any point if, if those things changed or technology change.
Site plan.
Was that the whole application? The building permit application?
You want me to go get the plans?
Is that them?
Well, I'm assuming so.
Okay.
And I have big, huge plans to cross, if you wanna see them.
I'm just curious if they have to submit like a full package or what they submitted? If, if this is them, the small ones are fine, Terry, the small ones are fine.
I think what he's asking is, is if this packet is all that they submitted with that application.
And that, no, I was just asking you.
I don't look at the plans.
Okay, okay.
When they sent this, is this all that we got, is what he's asking?
This, everything you see on the table right?
All came in at one time?
All came in that building. But I would certainly send a letter.
All right, so it says there's no change. So they talked to us in January, right, they came in and told us they were moving some things around, said that was fine, no changes, no changes.
Well, I think we knew the whole time that the panels could change due to.
The modules themselves are gonna change more than what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he even told us by the time we construct this, we are probably going to be proposing a newer thing, but it, it didn't impact the site, it was just the type of unit that they were putting in, which is this information here.
Yeah, and we authorized them to make the change, they even came in and talked to us, I just wanted.
Yeah.
See if they're changing.
These are equipment and stuff, so.
And this is just a big version of those small ones, it seems like, right? I don't know. Yeah, cause you have to, you gotta like a five-page package, and then a bigger thicker one. So it's funny, they got a different engineer that does the detail drawings, and the other guy just does like the big picture work.
Okay, so I went down to the highway department and asked them about that, and I think they thought they were looking for site plans.
Oh, and you're asking for the plans on one of the sites?
Cause they sold out all seasonings, mutual.
Those would probably help though, right? Cause they would show what they're doing with their drainage, right? And where it goes.
Yeah, it didn't show that they were tying in. Do you think that was everything?
Give us justice.
It's a heavy one.
Yeah.
In case of trouble in the parking lot.
Halifax is a tough area.
Kickbox and everything?
Oh, yeah. You never know. You see on the news someplace, something's going on, could be a backyard. Ready to do one of those?
What's that?
Getting ready to do one of those projects?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we cleared up everything, it's running another discussion. Any other motions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in.
Aye.
Aye.